There were two foster youth items of conferences in the budget. One related, one intended for foster youth attendance and one for our partners. And so I do want to.
Hello, Ryan Clinton, manager of state initiatives with Texas Youth Commission, or Texas, I'm sorry, Texas Workforce Commission. Old agency.
Yeah. Brian, can you clarify? So I know we have this year's Foster Youth Conference.
Correct.
Scheduled for July.
For July.
Uh huh. And can you clarify in the budget for 2026?
So we did not have, we talked about the conference for the youth. Is that correct?
Yes.
I did not remember a budget for the youth. In particular, that was there.
But the one for partners.
The partners is still there, correct.
So for the youth conference, it was, we had tried to procure that and had been unsuccessful, procuring that previously.
Because I think there were two. There was a Foster Youth Expo that was specific for the Gulf Coast. And I don't think they had the interest, or they had lack of interest, so they didn't have the
Yes.
the people. But what I was talking about is the one that's happening here as well as the Foster Youth Conference. That's throughout the state. And on the line item, I saw that there was nothing for the operating budget for 2026. I just wanted to see if that was just a mistake, or, and if there wasn't, if we could put 65,000 in that.
So we do have a line item for the foster youth transition centers. And from that, we use the money for the conference. So we separate a portion out what's remaining from the transition centers. And then we will use that for the conference for the transition centers.
Okay, so there'll be enough in that to put 65 for the conference. What conference?
This is the conference that we hold for the foster youth transition centers. For instance, we do have that coming up towards the end of July. But that is for the transition centers. Now, a couple of years back, you did put in 65,000, I believe, just for foster youth and not the transition centers.
Right.
No, well, I think the one that I put for the 65 was for the Foster Youth Expo, which was specific for the Gulf Coast workforce area. And they announced it. There was not enough interest, so they didn't have it roll back in.
Correct. We, yeah, we did.
What I was looking at was here on line item. There is for the Foster Youth Conference, over here it had
65.
Five. And then there's nothing. So I was just curious if that wasn't funded, or if it was an oversight. And if it wasn't, I was asking if we could put in 65.
So I think what I hear Ryan saying is the 3.2 million associated with the foster youth workforce transition centers. That that is how we budget for the conference specifically for those partners. So it comes out a good 3.2 million, which is actually a slight increase over what we saw.
So is the 62,500 that's listed on the budgets, was that for the expo that failed to make it Gulf Coast board?
That is correct.
That was rolled back over to.
I believe that was, correct.
Now, if we're using that fund to fund the Foster Youth Conference, does that take away from the Foster Youth Transition Centers?
This, this is how it's previously been budgeted in the past. So no. It's part of the overall allocation.
So then we will have funds for a Foster Youth Conference.
Yes, sir.
Are those conferences? Do they travel? Are they in different parts of the state? I think Dallas and Houston.
I think last year it was in Austin.
Okay.
And this year it's in Allen, Texas.
Last year, we did have it in San Marcos. That was the second year in a row we had that in San Marcos. This year, we are moving it. It is up by Allen. And then we are planning on moving those around the state so that people will have other opportunities.
Correct.
Staff's package. Anything on staff's package? Couple of things. First, we're going to look at this. I see we've had some success over the last three, three years, consolidating programs into larger headings. So we took all of youth into one heading. All of our veterans' programs under one budget heading. And then in doing that, we made some flexibility in money for staff going across those different programs that might fall under that category. When I started looking at this, I see some additional consolidations that I think might have some merit. I'm looking at, in particular, wildly fluctuating funding levels for governors, summer merit, youth robotics, esports, and camp code. They're all about STEM jobs. And they are, at least in two cases, roughly the same kind of program, dealing with different groups of students. I would, I would like to see us combine all of these STEM, at least these four, into one budget line item with a dollar amount that would equal whatever staff has recommended for each of those. And giving staff the flexibility to move money between those. So give a good example. Some years camp code does well, other years camp code does not have a lot of demand. And in a year where, where, say, Governor Summer Merritt has more demand than we thought and camp code didn't, right now, it's a whole process for staff to reprogram that money and send it over to Governors, Summer Merritt. I'd like for us to entertain the idea that we would just, whatever staff's recommended for the funding level, combine those in one fund, make that available to staff and let them make decisions within those four and the parameters that are there. Does that, does that sound like something that's more workable for you, or it doesn't really matter?
So Chairman, if I understand you correctly, you're saying these four initiatives, Governor Summer Merritt, esports, camp code, robotics, that these were the separate initiatives or a combined initiative? And we do have the ability, the way that the commission has directed the funds in the most recent years, it's, you know, as you indicated in your layout, have the flexibility to, to reprogram, to use that terminology, some funds from one to another. Perhaps that could be easier if there was a way for us to somehow combine these, to have some type of
Like put them under a STEM category?
Yeah, just something called STEM, or something better than that. I'll come up with a good thing. But, and then the answer to your question is, I, I want to give you guys maximum flexibility. And I think we've got several programs here that are all about one topic, four programs specifically about one topic, which is STEM. And I would like to, I would like to streamline that even further. And rather than lock you into esports, camp code, summer merit, we'll see, other one, robotics, youth robotics, that we take all that money that's been designated for that, bring that up into this larger STEM category and let you rebrand that in some appropriate way. That's what I'm talking about.
I think beyond the, the idea of more efficiency and how we reprogram the funds based on demand, it may help us more quickly solicit grant applications if there was some flexibility there. As opposed to having potentially four different separate funding streams and four separate solicitations. If we could put out one solicitation, one call for applications, or, let's just for the sake of argument, call it STEM programs. And then have these as maybe allowable type activities within that initiative. That would, that would save the agency time and hopefully gain some, gain some efficiency in terms of getting the dollars awarded.
All right. I'll tell you what, we'll come back around to this concept when we vote some of these out. Give you guys just a chance to noodle on that and come back to it. Second, we have made a lot of progress. When I look at the materials that you prepared for this discussion, we have made a lot of progress on collecting and assessing outcomes data for the different programs that we have created and are now administrated through TWC. I don't think we've gone far enough. But I think we've made tremendous progress on getting the type of data that can help us really make better resource allocations. I, I want to see us get to the point where we use outcome data on everything that we're doing to understand what funding levels would be, what impacts we're having, what the longer term impacts on the workforce would be. I, you know, it's, it's hard to go in and impose data when we weren't collecting data, you know, six, seven, eight years ago. And so it has to be kind of this work in progress. I, I think at this point, it's my instinct to mandate that we do this, but I don't, I think that slows down like our effort. I'm just encouraging you as whenever and wherever you can collect outcome data, let's be collecting outcomes. I'd like to see the commission move very soon to where we can make our future funding decisions based largely in part to what we're seeing in output data. So where it's appropriate to collect outcome data, where we have the ability to collect reliable outcome data, I encourage you to be doing that. I don't think we're to the point where we can make funding decisions about that. But I think this is an important thing to us. And then thirdly, and I would be absolutely remiss if I didn't talk about this. I've been, last year during this process, I'm pretty sure I complained to Mr. Serna about how long it takes for us to go from, we funded this to an application goes out. I don't think we have sped up any in the last 12 months. I think probably we've slowed down in the last two months. I've been looking at initiatives from our last two work sessions, and some of those haven't even launched yet. I know there's a lot of things that go into that. And this is not a criticism of staff. If anything, it's a criticism of how we've structured some things within the agency. But business, job creation, economic development in the state, they, they move at the speed of business. We, we're not yet. And I hope that we'll continue to do the types of adjustments that we've been doing in an exponential kind of way so that we can move at the speed of business. I don't think there's anything we can do today. I, I would just say, you know, when we have this meeting next year, I, I hope we're not talking about any programs or initiatives that we discussed here next year that haven't come out the door yet. Y'all, I've seen some plans. You guys are very serious about it. You're taking it very seriously. You're doing good work relative to this. It's just not fast enough. And to the extent that we can get everybody on board, General Counsel's Office, you know, Lowell's whole team, contracting, Mr. Serna's not missing it. That's a good sign. But it, it's one of those things where the whole agency is going to have to move in this direction of when this commission says, hey, we think this is an initiative that will benefit business. We, we need to have a process in place that lets us get that on the street much more quickly. Mary, in particular, I, I commend you for what you have done. It's not an easy process changing any bureaucracy. Because the bureaucracy loves its own bureaucracy. And it's, it's one of those things that there's a lot of moving parts. I, I'm unfortunately the one tasked with constantly complaining about how long it takes us to do something. It is faster. I, I think if we'll keep that in mind, keep these data points in mind, particularly this outcome data, and continue to do innovations like we discussed in my first point where immediately you seized upon my idea of, you know, maybe we could combine these and speed things up. Anything we can do to keep our ability to run a good, trustworthy, you know, fiduciary, responsible program, but at the same time actually move stuff out to the people who are going to benefit from it. The more we can do that, I think the better off that we are. But I appreciate all that's been done today. Unfortunately, I guess I'm not going to complain about it, but we'll, we'll keep moving in the future. On some specific initiatives in staff's package. And I'm not, I'm not coming with a change today unless you want to, unless staff wants to entertain it today. So I'm kind of springing this on you. When I look at high demand job training, right, and I look at the balance on hand for economic development corporations throughout the state. Typically speaking, in high demand job training, we're matching what's probably type B money, almost certainly. It could be some type A, but type B money. When we're matching that, the balances on hand for EDCs across the state are in the billions of dollars. And I, I really think we should entertain lifting the limitations that we've placed on high demand job training in terms of how many applications each board can do, how many applications are available. If we want to continue to limit the dollar amount to limit our exposure, I understand that. But I, I think we should open this up and accept as many applications as any board wants to provide. Remember, it's matching. So they're going to have to show up with real dollars. They can't just apply for it on a, on a wish for kind of basis. They're going to have to have a partner in mind. They're going to have to do that. And that might necessitate us at some point coming back and raising the dollar amount available for high demand job training. But I, I, I'm going to put it to a question here just second for the commission. But if we, if, I guess my question for you is, did we set that limit, or did staff set that limit for the number of applications a board can turn in for high demand job training?
At one time, the commission set that limit. I'm sure that at the time, or I should say, likely at the time, the staff made a recommendation as to the dollar amount and the number based on trying to ensure that there was, you know, sort of, if multiple boards had an opportunity to participate. I, I will know, I mean, in, in response to your question or your comments rather regarding lifting the limitations on how many applications, but not necessarily touching the dollar amount. I guess I would put back to you, was there a scenario then where a board could submit an application with an EDC and then turn around and submit another application with the same EDC? You know, if it's about the number of applications and not the dollar amount. So, I mean, could we theoretically have multiple applications from the same partner with that board area?
Theoretically, yeah, I can see that. You know, my comment would be, they're doing job training with it. And, you know, as long as they're passing audits and passing some sort of TWC monitoring, if they're doing the work, I, I would, I personally would not have a issue with that. I mean, if someone wants to do a $3 million high demand job training grant, they want to match that with their $3 million. I would have always had either. But I think from a, from a program management standpoint, I think there has to be, you know, some parameters for staff to do the very best job of managing that. I, I, I think that's, look, I think high demand job training is something that we're probably underselling for whatever reason. I, I think it has the potential to unlock a whole lot of stuff in the rural part of Texas that's, that's closest to the exorbitant part of Texas, wherever that may be, you know. I, I think we're talking slightly west of Weatherford, if you're talking Fort Worth. I think all those communities know where they are. But particularly where they have a community college, and particularly where they have a lot of growth pushing out in their direction, I think high demand job training becomes a very effective tool to help the community unlock its sales tax money that they've already collected. And it gets us an opportunity to do that. I'll circle back around on that one too. I, I, I think then the real question just becomes whether or not we want to remove the limitations on how many applications are submitted for applicants. I don't, I don't, I don't think, I don't think I want to take away staff's ability altogether to kind of manage the program. In other words, I, I don't think this thing works best when we like set all the rules for it. I think staff must have some latitude to do that instead of the trenches ahead of us. I, I think this is something we did do a long time ago, and perhaps it's time to revisit.
So is it, is it a concern that, that one EDC will, will draw up all the resources?
I don't know that I have a concern. I was just questioning, you know, at that point, is there a point in having the limit or keeping the limit at the same amount?
We're talking limiting like a board area or something like that?
So maybe I should lay out too, the parameters of the current program. Of each board area is allowed up to one high demand job training and one Texas Industry Partnership Program grant annually for $150,000 each.
Okay.
Now, it's a one for one match. That means that the partner needs to provide $150,000 as well. So in, in the chairman scenario of a $3 million request, we would have a problem with that because right now we're budgeted or the proposed budget is $2 million for both programs combined. But at $150,000 each, again, I just wanted to get the commission's opinion. At this point, as you're thinking through possible scenarios, do you have any concerns about multiple applications from the same partners? I don't know that it's a concern of ours. I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't a different thought in terms of how we would want to see this implemented should the commission vote to take action.
Would there be like a time limit, like shorten the time limit to then open it up to the awards to reapply again because they have another employer that's willing to match or EDC willing to match? That way it's, you don't waste time and staff doesn't have to get bogged down. They'll have a certain time limit that there it's open from here, wherever it's not used.
That's a great, a great point, Commissioner. And it's kind of worked on some level that way in the past, actually. So I should have, I should have noted this, that in the last quarter of the year, typically if there were any funds available, we do go ahead and say, hey, if there was another project that you wanted to fund. So occasionally, we will have a board receive more than one award in a year. But those, those are not, certainly not guaranteed. And it would be dependent upon no other boards coming to the table. And it also is dependent on them being able to get in an application timely in order for it to be awarded before the end of the year. And, and I do think that that is one thing we've experienced and had a little bit of trouble with whenever we have given boards a second, you know, bite of the apple, so to speak, is then for them. Because frequently, you know, there's, there's local business that has to take place as well. You know, local meetings and approvals and whatnot. So, you know, they have timelines that they're working with and work that has to be done on their end before they can usually get us an application to consider.
And are there any stipulations that say that they have to be unique in that same board area? And so like, one board area can't do two on the same high demand job.
No, there, there's not a stipulation like that. In fact, I would say that, you know, the parameters that the commission has most recently approved indicate that the occupations funded must be high demand occupations or on the board's targeted occupations list or be part of the governor's current industry clusters. So there is the possibility that you're going to see, for instance, healthcare, you know, in more than one application. But because we see, you know, frequency of healthcare occupations on this targeted occupation list. I, I will also note, and I think the chairman brought up community colleges, this is also a program where we see a high degree of partnership between the EDCs and school districts in their area as well. So these funds have also been used in recent years to expand CTE options. You know, frequently in partnership with the community college also, but a, a lot of school districts. And so there's an instance where you might have duplication because students don't have the ability to be in one school district and just pop over to the other school district for the training, right?
One more thing about staff's package on USKL Texas, it appears that we have zeroed that out. Just tell us where we are with the funding and what, what situation we're in.
Good question. So we're carrying forward the balance on USKL Texas. The commission at the February, February meeting approved 5 million in additional funding for USKL Texas. And we are just now about to close the application round on June 30th. I can tell you based on the volume of applications we've received so far, we have received far more applications than we have in available funding. You know, those applications are still being evaluated to ensure that they are meeting the parameters of the program. For instance, that their foreign incumbent worker training, that it's technical training, that the employers are understanding those sorts of items are all things that the applications have to be vetted for. But it's, it's not so much that we zeroed it out. It's just
There was still money.
There was still money.
There is still money. And if we have enough applications to use up all that money, there's nothing really stopping the commission from coming, if there's an available, is that, we usually go up for that one?
Yes, sir.
There's nothing stopping us from coming back. If there's available, we owe a balance. I mean, in fact, I think the money that's in there right now was money that came back in in part. So there's, there's other opportunities to revisit those, if correct.
That is correct. And I would envision that by the end of July, beginning of August, we'll have a better sense of how many applications we have in excess of the 5 million available. And if, if the commission directs this to you, you're certainly happy to work back another, a proposal for additional funds at that.
Chairman, can I get a, can I ask for a quick update on the, on our internship website?
Internship challenge?
Yeah.
Absolutely. So at the, again, at the February meeting, the commission requested some changes to the Texas Internship Challenge website. Those, those changes included improving usability and registration process. It also included adding some additional functions such as mock interviews, AI assisted mock interviews, and then also looking at rebranding. And we are, we have already completed some of the usability work on the, the registration process. We are in the process of the development for the AI functionality, and I expect to have that, those job interview coaching functions available in the fall as well as working with our Office of Communication and Media to bring forth some recommendations on a rebrand.
Okay.
Can you give me an update on the procurement for the Foster Youth Network?
Update on the, yes. We are currently investigating potential partners, higher education partners, where we might be able to partner through an IAC as opposed to, we had, we had released a solicitation seeking a grantee, a purpose grantee, more unsuccessful in that pursuit. So we think that this may be another viable option. There are universities who are working with this population and those partners already. So we think that there might be some opportunities there.
Thank you.
Right, anything else? We spent time. So here's one way we can proceed. This might be a good time for us to stop discussion, take a vote on the staff package, and then pick up our proposals from last week. And this is probably not the best way to do business, but it's the most expedient way to do business. I'm asking you to vote on both the STEM youth initiatives, the four, and the high demand job training as staff presented it. We'll come back around and talk to my suggestions for, for changing that in the commissioners. It's the fairest way to do this. Don't forget, our discussion of staff initiatives does include the childcare proposals that you saw last Tuesday. that you saw last Tuesday as well. That's the discussion paper on childcare proposals. It was five pages that you saw there. There's also in that package, so you've got childcare ten if we owe up. Remember, there's also AEL and employment services. I hadn't seen, I didn't see any significant changes in there. So any discussion on this? If not, I will, we approve the statewide initiatives as part of this year 2026 operating process as presented and discussed today, with any edits reflected from our discussion and agree with today, there weren't none. So this would be a vote on staff's proposal. Is there a second?
I'll say.
All right, move this again. Is there any further discussion on staff's proposal, including the childcare proposals? Hearing that motion carries. All right. We can still amend this, just keep that in mind if we get into some discussion here on these other proposals that leads us down another trail, we can always come back and make a commitment to what we've just done before we get out of here. Let's take this off then. We'll move into commissioner proposals.
Last week I asked about nuclear energy is an important area for our workforce. And we must ensure that we provide the necessary skills and training to maximize the potential of this vital industry, which will serve the workers of our state by providing new jobs with higher earnings potential. Senate Bill 1535 recognized this reality and has directed us to create, in collaboration with the Tri-Agency Initiative and the Public Utility Commission, an advanced nuclear energy workforce development program. While no fundings were appropriated for this program, I would like to propose a pilot program to identify ways in which we can support workforce development in this area. And requesting that we use 1.5 million dollars and we owe statewide funds to create this pilot program, which will work to establish a talent pipeline for this industry.
Any comments, questions, question, as far as?
I, I support the effort, actually. I think so.
I have a couple technical questions. Mr. Troman, I, I think this piece of legislation directs us to rulemaking of this before we proceed with that. Is that, am I reading that correctly?
I believe that's correct.
Also, there's two things on this particular one that I, I do think we want to keep in mind. One is the necessity to do this in collaboration with the Tri-Agency Group, being coordinated and forwarded at TGA. And then, if I remember also correctly, there was a statutory direction to work with the Public Utility Commission to, to do this as well. Am I right on all that? My point is, is we're gonna, we're gonna, I think we all, I mean, I'm supporting him, so there's one pocket, there are two. So there's, we're gonna put 1.5 million for this today. But the commission's gonna do a lot of work on this before we can proceed with that pilot program or not. And I'm not sure if you're calling it a pilot program because of the amount of money, but we don't really have to. We could just do it how we, how we want to lay this out. But I think we just need to be cognizant of the fact that we have to work with at least three other agencies on this one and we have to go through rulemaking ourselves. And so that, that will necessarily create a, a longer timetable than probably what we would like to see, but I think that's how it's gonna be.
I was just curious because I thought it would be, since it was a shorter program, it would have like circumvent the rulemaking process for this, so we could get like a, a basis for what we would work with. Especially going into the future years to make sure that that Senate Bill 1535, along with the Tri-Agency and Public Utility Commission, would have a good foundation for that. That was my.
Yeah, that's Mr. Troman's question.
So the question, the idea is that it would be sort of a, an initiative that's not needed, it's not designed to meet the 1535 requirements. Whether it's and efforts to, to age whether or not we can.
Like, we can already run the traps to see what will work and what our partners can come up with to make sure that when we do have to go to Senate Bill 1535, that we have a better understanding of it.
Could we use this pilot to determine what the final, what the rules need, need to look like? So that it is truly a pilot, it's more just a theater program that helps us establish what's workable from a rules perspective as opposed to crafting rules based on something theoretically and then running a pilot and then having to adjust the rules or adjust a future pilot. Maybe actually use it as a real pilot, that would show, that would, we'd scope it down some maybe, but then be able to come back and inform the commission about the findings and the pilot. Then we just have the final rules, the final rules that would be in place for.
Yeah, like I don't want it to model exactly in the legislature. I want to have like a basis, a foundation so that we know when this comes up and takes a break, that we have an idea of what will work and what's not work.
We'll just want, and I, I don't think that's an issue. We'll just need to make sure we run the traps to ensure it's, it's not running afoul of the statute itself and the spirit of the statute itself as well. But I think, me, I feel like, you know, putting the, putting this front of the market for effective focusing the powerless to, to run those traps.
Commissioner, when I was reading your discussion paper, I noticed you were, you would reference from other emerging industries. So I also took this to mean that potentially this could be a pilot for other emerging, emerging industries. Like renewable energy, advanced energy, cybersecurity as well, ultimately, just starting with nuclear, is that correct?
Right. So and there are others that aren't high demand jobs, like I've been talking to different companies that say that industrial painters and blacketers are going to be very important for not just the NPI reactors, but the LNG, because they make sure that all the containers are rust free and secure. And we don't have enough here in Texas at this time due to the training and certification that it takes to get, get that. Most of them are on the east coast. So I think we need to start building that pipeline, workers that's not high demand yet, but will probably be in the future. So thank you for pointing that out. It's going to be also for different industries that fall under this proposal or this legislation.
So perhaps to the chairman's earlier comments, we would initiate this as a pilot, come back and report to the commission on outcomes. And then based on those outcomes, present some additional recommendations for other emerging industries, like emerging, or that, or bigger.
To clarify, the triggering rulemaking is, 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 does that affect the application of the pilot program? Or is the pilot program gonna help establish rulemaking to push?
I think if we de-linked this money from 1535 and just make this money about emerging industries. And, and basically the point being, we, we want to determine the best way to link someone to 1535. I think, Joe, that becomes much, that must become much less of an issue for us. With it linked to 15, the more it's linked to 1535, the more I think I'm not comfortable proceeding without rulemaking.
Okay.
The more the commission just had a great idea, which sounds like we did. The more the commission had a great idea and said, we're gonna get out ahead of this. I think the less they're linked and the more we can experiment with it. Because I, I would tend to agree with, without, because I, I think that there are a lot of jobs that are on the verge of becoming high demand jobs. I think there are a lot of jobs that are already high demand jobs, but the way we count that is probably not the best. And so I think there are lots of opportunities here. And I think the more we can get ourselves oriented along the lines of, okay, that job's hard to fill, nurses. Let's, let's do some programming to help people get the nurses that they need, help employers with the nurses they need. That helps everybody. So I, I think to the extent that's what you're describing.
Right. And I think I put the Senate bill, just as an example, not that we're gonna model it. So I guess in the future, I won't put the Senate bill, I guess, to, so that there's no really question that we're linking it to it. I was just kind of referencing that, that I know that that's what legislature is thinking about for the future. I wanted to kind of get a jumpstart on that. And like my second, a Senate bill, it's the same concept. It's just to try to follow and get ahead of, of the work that's going to be happening.
One thing I would just add that, that I think this conversation is helpful because, you know, the commission, you'll be coming back a month or two to discuss rulemakings in general and how you want to prioritize those for the upcoming cycle, the next year, year two. And so recognizing that this potential rulemaking is on our last, also.
Anything else on this specific board? Otherwise, permission to roll over.
Okay, the next one is rural workforce. The commission has recognized the challenges that rural communities face in workforce development. Rural school districts and community colleges often lack the resources to address these issues to properly develop the needed workforce. And Senate Bill 2448 directed the creation of a rural workforce development grant program to provide grants to nonprofit organizations that will provide technical assistance and support to rural colleges and school districts with not appropriate funds for the program and requires formal rulemaking prior to the implementation. I believe that engaging an ineligible public or private research institution to develop a pilot program to assist these rural community colleges and school districts with grant applications, facility upgrades, partnership development, and aligning education with employer needs will help us identify skill gaps, training programs, and facilitate private partnerships. And I am requesting 1 million dollars in wheel funds to create this pilot program.
So I'm back to my original questions. I think you've already stated, your intent was not to link this to Senate Bill, what was that, 24, 2448? To link it to 2448, that really this is about rural programs. Now, we have a number of rural programs from a year, two or three years ago. I don't know when we did that. Some of those have been implemented. I think all of those at this point have been implemented. Does this parallel any of those? I mean, is this similar to something we've already done relative to rural train? Or is this unique enough that we can run this also as kind of a pilot program?
I don't think that we have anything that meets the specific criteria that the commission, you know, laid out just now in this discussion paper. I will, I think I could ask one clarifying question now. Commissioner, you mentioned facility upgrades. Are, are you envisioning that the research institution would make recommendations on facility upgrades to the institutions, the school districts that they're assisting? Or are you recommending that facility upgrades be part of the actual funding? And, and the reason I bring that up is it, it may have, there may be some limitations related to the oil funding. But also, but really the timing can be problematic because specifically construction projects can take some amount of time. So that may be a consideration that we would want to.
I think the, the main thing is that some of these smaller rural community colleges or school districts don't have the space. And the private or public institutions that are helping them with this would allow them to look at different avenues or suggestions on how to make space available or use vacant strip malls that have become available and partner with a city or county entities to get a space maybe donated to the school district or college so that they can use. Because some of the equipment that is being used to train the students is big and takes a lot of space. A lot of these school districts are found in and don't have that capacity. So that was the kind of thought process.
Do you have any other additional ones? All right. Let's move to your first. You have the parent educator childcare pilot.
My one request for state initiative, built parent educator child care pilot program to expand access and workforce participation utilizing childcare development. Basically to test parent participation in childcare models. And I know we have continued to talk to Ray, yeah, Ray, please, can you sit next to me?
She's gotta be over here.
I know we have, I have some types, obviously childcare providers have programs to where they set volunteers into the, the classrooms, I'm just gonna say classroom. A lot of volunteers to, to help and basically just kind of keep an eye on, on things, as it were. This program also, I hope it addresses training for childcare providers, caregivers to be trained in what I'm thinking, I, I think we, we mentioned up to 30 hours of training and annual professional development to provide them, that helps them participate as parents, but also makes them qualified for employment in their early childcare workforce in, in, in that, in that, in that nature. I currently know there's a program in Houston that we've, we've talked with, that, that I see how this works on a daily basis. It's, it's positive. And I feel that's what we're here for, is to, to, to go and look at different programs to find out what's working in different areas. I'd like the opportunity to, to, to highlight or provide the ability for other workforce development regions to, to take advantage of something like this, get it off the ground and see how, how it goes. So I definitely think this is specifically a pilot program and to, to, to be able to afford the ability to address a certain population. With that, it's, it's, we're asking 4.7 billion dollars to put into that. And I believe we are, that would be redirected from a pilot program, from staff recommendation, that there be the childcare investment partnership program. That's recommended, discontinuation of that program to utilize the money that was allocated for that to fund this program. Forgive me, I don't know the details on the discontinuation of that program, but if the monies are available, I hope that this wouldn't be digging into, to, to.
We just discontinued this, so.
But again, I, I, I think this also, you know, obviously strengthens caregiver ratios and, and helps, helps, helps address a, mostly these programs, this program specifically addresses lower, lower income. So it's, it's not gonna affect 100% change for the entire childcare system because something like that, we haven't, we haven't untangled that not yet. But again, if it is able to help a certain population in, in different parts of the state that's available to them, I'd like to see if we give, give that a go.
I mean, I like this proposal. The only clarification I would ask is the parents that are participating in this program as to their TWC rights to the services. For example, if one of the parents is on UI benefits, will that affect the UI benefits because their unavailability to work, because they're doing the volunteer program or?
And we talked about subsidies. We didn't talk about UI.
So in the childcare program, you can receive childcare for up to three months while you're unemployed and looking for work. But after that, they do have a work requirement. So I don't know that it would have a UI impact if somebody was receiving UI and they were looking for work. They potentially could be enrolled in this program. And then these volunteer hours would count towards their childcare work requirement.
If they're getting, they're getting paid or basically they're getting paid to do this, then they would have to support that income if they're receiving, if they're receiving.
Yeah, and the, in exchange for their, their. Yeah, in the, in exchange for their, their actual payment, I think that's, that's one day what they're doing is volunteering one day to, to subsidize the other.
They're really not getting paid to be dying in check like they would before.
But they would be working somewhere else.
Right.
So in addition to, so they have to volunteer one day with no pay. But they also have their work requirement, and so they would also be working for pay.
Is that still twenty-five hours?
Twenty-five hours for a single parent. And our current rules do not allow volunteer hours to count towards the twenty-five. So we would need to waive our rules if we wanted to allow that one day of volunteering to count towards the twenty-five.
Again, the access to this, you know, somebody with a eight to five Monday through Friday would, would may not be able to, to, to access this program. There would be. An idea that, that people. Ship, you know, ship for gig work, restaurants, hospital, you know. You have to be available to provide one day to, to volunteer. Um, or if you, like, you know, like my wife, she, she, she would work Tuesday through Saturday, but that's just her normal given. Um, work week, that would be ideal for something like this. So it's, I do understand it's, it's, it's kind of nuanced with the, the. Population of these using this, but I still feel that it would be a, a good action to, to, to address that, that population. It's with them, ability to get to work and provide affordable childcare.
So guidelines still apply? If they stop volunteering, does our three-month clause go in?
If they're still working at a different location.
That they, so in other words, they stop volunteering and they pick up their twenty-five hours working. They still, they leapfrog their way into a spot off the waitlist and they keep it because they have it.
Correct. We're under federal regs, we're required to provide twelve months of childcare. As long as they're working.
Yeah. On page one, at the top of the page, it says this will reduce the waitlist. How will this reduce the waitlist?
If we can serve four hundred more children. Then. Within, I, I don't know if reduce the waitlist is technically probably the right way of saying that. It will serve more children. Those children may or may not be on the waiting list. One of the other recommendations was that we allow. We allow these children to skip the waiting list. If we, if we implement this and follow the current waitlist policy, then any board that. Wants to participate in this has to go down the waitlist one by one and contact every parent in priority order. And ask them, would you like to participate at a parent caregiver pilot project?
Wouldn't they be able to opt into that? I mean, we're, we're, we're going through a very convoluted way of doing that. If, if, if you're on, if you're talking to, let's say the board has a hundred. People go that are, you know, involved in, in childcare. If, if, if I'm somebody that, that works Monday through Friday and absolutely not able to do that, I could opt out of it. And, and that would help alleviate the, the, the. The onerous task of calling every individual. Uh, but as people start to, you know, access the waiting list, they can, they could say, I'd be interested, give me a call if, if an availability pops up.
But as I understood on page three. Where we would, we're, we're seeking, you're seeking waivers. To basically treat. These parents as a, as a class of parents who would be equal to contracted slots, they would be equal to, to the FPS's must-have slots. That, in other words, they never actually go on the waitlist. They just go straight to the child. I just want to be careful about saying it will reduce the waitlist because it won't reduce the waitlist at all. They'll actually never go on the waitlist. And even if they did and came right back off, other parents will fill it behind it. It doesn't really do anything to reduce the waitlist. It, it does however, increase the available childcare workforce. And we, in lieu of payment, we are incenting parents to want to do this volunteer work. By giving them another kind of benefit, which is okay. I, I mean, like, we're trying to increase total capacity at the childcare centers. I think that's what we're trying to do. And if parents are willing to volunteer and complete all the training that's necessary to do that, because it's like, what, thirty hours of training plus a criminal background check? I mean, you don't just show up and start volunteering. So four point seven million would be four hundred and seventy kids, roughly.
Well, we would have to, the boards would need some money to, for, you know, to operate the program. They're gonna. They're gonna have to have staff eligibility workers. They're gonna have to. Do announcements to see if childcare programs want to participate. So there's some administrative and operational costs.
Like, do we know the breakdown?
Uh, my estimate was maybe seven hundred thousand of this four point seven, which, which is about fifteen percent, I'm guessing would be admin ops, which would leave four million. Yes.
What would be, uh, the volunteer work for the parent if they have more than one child? Because I think it says one day per week for each child.
Yes, if they have two, then they have to volunteer two days.
Is it, uh, is there the, is there an opportunity for, is it solely the parent, but we, we also include a caregiver, right? When you, when you say parent.
Whoever the guardian of the child is.
Okay.
So it wouldn't be like a grandparent or could it be?
It, it would be whoever on our CCS cases is basically. Attached to that child.
Yeah, this, the program that I've looked, watched is they allow. If, if, if they're able to have, uh, you know, a grandparent or somebody that, that's also.
I don't think we can do that here because we're basing it off the rules we already have.
And counting those hours towards their work requirement.
Right.
Yeah.
On page two, we talk about flexible scholarships. What are these flexible scholarships?
I thought that that language had been removed. That was in the initial draft that we saw, and I think we recommended taking that out. Did it not come out? I, I think it was, it was referring to the twelve month eligibility subsidy, financial aid scholarship, all meaning the same thing.
Well, there's no, so scholarship here actually means subsidy. And, and then there's no flexible. It's just whatever the rules are.
Scholarships are flexible insofar as a parent gets to select, um, the provider of their choice.
Subsidies, yeah.
Yes.
On page three in the second bullet point, we did, we get into a series. Of exemptions and waivers. But I, I went and read the childcare rules. In eight oh nine. And I can't see that we have the authority to do blanket waivers. So there is a, there is a discussion about waivers. But it, it requires someone to petition for a waiver. It doesn't say that the commission can on its own. Ability ask for that waiver. Somebody, somebody has to ask us to grant it.
There is that section of the rule on waivers. There's also another section on special projects.
Yeah, and I didn't see anything in that section about waivers. And then this, you're talking about eight oh nine point five three.
Yes.
Which also specifically says that only non-CCDF funds can be used for a special project. Are these CCDF funds?
They are.
So another waiver. And I don't know if we have the ability to grant that waiver. Now, having said all of that. We're about to enter into a whole bunch of rulemaking. And I actually think this thing has somewhere here. This is, this is a very novel way to help us deal with the lack of. Of available workforce in childcare. I, I, that part is so intriguing to me. I, I just, I'm very concerned about us doing this in the framework that we currently have. So this, this thing on non-CCDF funds, perhaps the general counsel should look into that further. I don't see any ability for us to do, um, blanket waivers. And then we can't just amend the definition of work without doing rulemaking. What I would recommend is that we do expedited rulemaking on making this a specific special project. And just do rulemaking on this, put it in there. I, I absolutely would vote for the four point seven million today. But in my opinion, and I would certainly let Mr. Trowman contradict me, but in my opinion. I, I think some of this would require either some. Novel legal interpretations or our ability to go in and do some, some fairly quick rulemaking on that. I'm perfectly content to vote for the money and wait for the answers to those questions to determine how to proceed.
This, this proposal is something that I wanted to, I want to see, we definitely need to still test the waters, and I think that's kind of part of the water. Talking about when it comes to waivers and the definition of. Working business. So, um, I. I would definitely like to see a little bit more work done so that we can iron out some of the issues that are brought up today. Um, I don't know what.
No, this is what I think should happen.
Yeah.
Figure out what we want to do today, but I think we just vote for the money, say we're gonna earmark four point seven billion for this purpose. And then we'll engage in whatever activity this commission needs to engage in and make it happen. I mean, unless you, I haven't really, Mr. Trump, you've been watching the notch. It's, it's one of those things. I don't think you got any opposition.
Yeah.
I think, I think you can't do it the way it's written in this proposal, but that's what I think. Actually, Mr. Trowman gets to think on this one. So I, I, you know, I think let's find out what we need to do and then let's just do that. We'll come back and think about this. Is there anything else for? All right.
Was there anything else that was?
Yep, that's good.
I know those were pretty much all the flags that we, we talked about when we.
On Tuesday, last Tuesday, I laid out Texas senior military leader internship program. Ron Reagan, right? Five hundred thousand dollars. This is, I'll be real honest with you, this is, this is an issue that joint-based San Antonio has encountered. I think that's meaningful because it's all branches. This is who raised the issue with us, essentially in their market. All the senior level officers' jobs that they might get, um, very backlog in their marketplace. These officers need experience elsewhere. Uh, I think that an internship program, much like a college internship program. It, it, I, I only talked to the army, Bob. Bob, did we talk to just the army or did you dare to talk to other branches on this?
I talked, spoke with the army and of course Seraphina with the air force. And then if she, they, they have the Navy that goes through there, the coast guard and everybody.
But Bob talked to the air force, Joe. Do you understand? Five hundred thousand dollars really finances the administrative portions of this. Uh, it is my understanding, uh. That the military says they also have money to help with this effort for officers that are mustering out. So, uh, our, our role here would be to formalize this process, give it a name, give it some shake, but most importantly. Hand it over to the veterans leadership program and, and let Bob and his, uh, his squad do what they do very well.
Could I, um, I don't know if we can open, if we can talk about the past initiatives in this. The military to civilian employment, um, that three million that we proposed that we, we brought up. Mary and Bob, it was one point four million of that three was applied for and approved was one point. Basically one point four, just shade under. That. That's all, we didn't ask for any further funding for that transition. I think that was basically to, to meet a one-time gap between.
The military transitions civilian unemployment is included in the twenty-five six budget.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure because if there was any money to, to appropriate. Um, toward, toward that, I didn't know if it would be helpful to, to make sure that we don't leave any money in pot that hadn't been, been pulled in.
To your point, um, and I guess to the chairman's point earlier, if the commission wanted to amend any of the amounts and what you just approved, then I was made to.
Yeah, we can do that. I mean, there's a, there's a need.
Is that, does it make it less complicated or, or, or?
Right now, last we have six board areas that have been funded, one of them close to one point four million south. I could tell you there's a board area who's getting ready to submit another grant because of the size. So right now.
We can basically say that money's gonna be used for.
It should be used, yes, sir.
Let me, I'll withdraw.
No, it's a good discussion because you know what, Fort Hood and Fort Bliss, they have a different job placement issue.
Right.
Than JBSA.
Massive amounts of.
And some of the.
Done.
Yeah, and the air force pilot faces where it's all senior level pilots coming in. It's just two different things.
Yeah, no, I agree.
And then, and then, we need both of those. I mean, like, you raise a good point. Questions, your concerns, comments?
So the TBLP, uh. Program, will the, the funds be outside the boards? Will it go straight to this program? Funding go to this program?
It would go to TBLP, right?
It would, funding would, would come to us, but it was used to hold stakeholder, uh, stakeholder meetings, uh, and travel. In order to do this, and I, and I've talked with Seraphina, this is gonna be challenging but fun because of what we're targeting. This is something that has not been done on the state. Uh, Hirona Heroes at a Chamber of Commerce has done something similar. But not, not to the level we're trying to do it. So that's where the money would be spent, Commissioner.
So the five hundred thousand is primarily, if not all, for TBLP to do, that part of the work. There might, we might have to supplement a little bit about what's going on. Anything else? I'm gonna move on to supporting career shifters. And I, we're a hundred percent taking. Nominations for a better name. Revenge of the career shifters, like a bad eighty. Now, this, this is people who are making a shift in their career path. These are people who are making a move in their career, probably shifting from one career to the other. Uh, one time, uh, someone at a, a silicon chipmaker here in the state, they told it to me as a joke, but I have to think it's true. They said. They tried to target dental hygienists to come make silicon wafer chips because they're used to wearing a mask and working in small confined spaces. I thought that was pretty funny. I also think it might partially be true. Um, this is an opportunity for TWC to, uh, basically. Supplement our career exploration initiatives by focusing a million dollars on. People who are simply shifting from one career to another. It's gonna necessitate some sort of additional training. This isn't necessarily about advancing within the career track that you're in. This is making a shift to a different type of deal, probably involves, uh, internships, uh, likely will involve internships as a way to do that kind of. Of career exploration, um, million dollars, and, and we run this through workforce the way we run other related types of projects. How much questions, concerns? All right. And now I'm gonna move to, uh, just our rotating industry. This is, this one's.
I was gonna ask you real quick, uh, on the career shifters or chapter people, will they clarify if they're still employed or unemployed?
To me, it doesn't matter. If it matters to you, you probably ought to get it on the table.
I mean, I don't think it matters. I just didn't know if you clarified the fact that it was, uh, that the people were, were making the career shift were still employed.
It might, it might give us a platform to start looking at ways to blend into some RESEA stuff.
Right.
I was gonna say, if they're unemployed, then they may be eligible for other services, other RESEA or OIA.
It's probably more about people who are. We would say in our parlance, underemployed because they need to, they need training to make a change. I, I would say. I hadn't really thought about it that way. Yeah. Mr. Serna's saying it just gives us more flexibility on how we help people. We, this is a whole, I, this is just a whole, we found, and what's frankly getting to be a really comprehensive package of how people can. This is a whole, this is just a whole, we found, what's frankly getting to be a really comprehensive package of how people can do career exploration.
Yeah. As somebody currently looking into the world pipeline welding, I support.
Look at that record you're talking about. Mr. Sparsa's confident.
Not looking.
You know, it's like a 3X penny raise for us. My last one here that I presented last Tuesday is, we just simply called it our rotating industry internship. This is, this is college students specifically. I make no bones about it. This would be us adding to our already robust college internship programs. I, I fully want this to be part of that package. It does not need to be standalone, but what I would like to do is dedicate $500,000 to a type of internship program that lets high school and possibly community college and even younger college students, particularly when they haven't really selected what they want to do yet, to be able to use this on career exploration for them to understand all the different jobs that are out there. And rather than get locked into their major and do like a junior, senior year of college internship, let's, let's think junior, senior year of high school possibly. First, second year of, of university or community college, either one. Yeah, obviously, $500,000, it's gonna operate somewhat like a, somewhat like a pilot program. But I, I want this to be statewide. I want this to be available. And honestly, it's a little light on details because we're gonna leave it up to staff to put some frameworks in place to, to run it so that they can run it. To make it fit with everything.
I just kinda wanted to point out too, there was a internship initiative that was on February 4th. I think this is different because that one had a specific job, but this one's okay to, I don't agree.
Okay, true.
That's a nice, a clarified question. Commented about holding this in to our other internship initiatives. If there was a way for us to allow this as an option under a larger internship umbrella, does that still meet the goals that you're?
As long as it's available to people. The administrative treatment of it. I just want to be sure that there's 500,000 available to help fund it, much, much like we're doing on senior military leaders. I just wanna make sure there's ample administrative funds. And then as we get into it, if we need something else, you'll bring it back to us and we'll talk about it again. Right, so I brought up earlier the notion to combine STEM youth programs all into one, which would require a renaming, I think. If you're not quite there, I can appreciate that. I'd say we turn it over to staff and, and let them move along and bring it back to us at a subsequent meeting. Unless you, if you want to vote for it today, I, I'm game either way. I, I trust them to get it done and I'm willing to vote it out, but if you're not, I'm sure.
Chairman, I have one question. Does that, do we, are we still gonna be able to, to earmark or I guess one item to each? Or is it just a big pot?
No, I, I'm aiming towards big pot.
Okay.
Yeah, so if earmarking's important to you, let's. And then whether or not we want to remove the prohibition on multiple applications on high-demand job training and potentially increase the dollar amount there. So I do not have a dollar amount in mind. My, my goal was simply to lift the prohibition on multiple applications, which I, I guess could necessitate staff asking us for more money at a later date. We're, we're not gonna get anywhere near the balances that are available to us today. So leaving that kind of funding amount, like lift the prohibition and move forward, at, at this point, doesn't pose a problem for us. If there's any opposition to removing the prohibition on the applications, I'll drop it for today. I'll bring it back later. It just won't be today. But, but, you know, I don't have a dollar amount in mind, so I can't, I can't tell you why, you know, what I would even want to increase it to. Let's do this. We need to vote on these individually. I'm gonna do it this way, just for expedience.
That wouldn't take room and change it.
What's that?
Would that wouldn't take room and change that?
No, because we did that to ourselves.
Okay.
Here, let's do this. So the, I'll go in order. We heard them. And we'll just take a quick vote on these. And then I think, we may need a motion there. We may not. Let's see where we end up. So emerging industry workforce development pilot program, this is Kuscher, Kameo presented this to us. Is there any objection to his proposal? A dollar amount. There is no objection. That one passes. Rule workforce development pilot program, $1 million. Is there any objection to his proposal? There is no objection. That one passes. On the parent educator childcare pilot program, $4.7 million. Is there any objection to the dollar amount over? Objection. The dollar amount passes. We dedicate $4.7 million. Mr. Trowman, you heard our discussion on concerns that we had about rules, rulemaking and, and the related subjects. Can staff clarify that? And then whatever requires commission action, you'll bring back to us at an appropriate time.
Yes.
Mr. Sparsa, is that okay?
That's great.
Is there any objection to doing it that way? There is no objection. So we're Texas senior military leader internship program at $500,000. Is there any objection to what you heard today, the proposal? An objection to the concept? No? All right. That one carries, supporting career shifters at $1 million. Any objections? Objections. That one carries rotating industry internship at $500,000. Is there any objection? There is an objection. That one carries. Kuscher Trevino, were you satisfied on the answer you got on the foster youth conference at $65,000? Okay, but we're here. I had the concept to combine the STEM youth together into one effort. Objections?
No, yeah. Could that work also for the internship initiative?
Any, any objections to adding the internship initiative? Adding it to, the idea that we would collapse the internships into one great big pot and let staff run the various components as, as they need to shift resources between. No objection? The objections? No objections? High demand job training, removing the prohibition on one application per board, opening that up and revisiting funding at the appropriate time. That's the motion I would offer. Is there any objection to that?
Chairman, I have a question before you.
There's this object.
I, I just wanna clarify. So high demand job training is the one you specifically spoken about. Texas Industry Partnership is funded, they're in the same bucket, you know, funding source and has the same limitations. Is it your intent that only the, the application limitation would all be removed from high demand job training?
Only because I didn't think of it. Now that you mentioned it, no, I don't object to that, but if these guys do. Here, here's what'll happen if you don't lift it on both of them, is all the money will go to high demand job training. And then industry partnership will be the one that's, so it's actually a concern, I think, or one. Any objection? All right, here, no objection. High demand job training removal, prohibition applications and also exchange partnership. Okay, that's all I have on my list. I actually think the way I did this, Mr. Trowman, I don't think we need another motion to clarify all that unless you want us to for clarity's sake.
No, I think what we're hearing is that your original motion earlier today is effectively amended by those two items.
Chairman, can I get some clarification on, on, on adding the internship? No, we can do that. Are we, is it the initiative? Because we have, I think we have three things. We have the Texas Internship Network, which we, we, we fund conferences, engage in with employers, and then we have a website. The website is the, is, is funded through the agency. Is there a difference between the use of the funding for the conferences that we put on?
The answer to the question is, is what we just did is we put all the funding into one bucket so we can pay for all the stuff that we already said we were gonna pay for. And, and the, the, the practical reality of that is, is if something needs more money, it'll get it. If something needs less money, it'll give that up to something else that can use it without us having to come back and address it again.
Okay.
Now, this is only possible because Mr. Serna selects the very best staff for the agency. And I trust that they'll use this on the spirit that's been given. And I think they'll alert us if we start having funding issues on this. That's the only reason that I was comfortable with doing it on the floor.
I will note one exception to that internship combination may be the Texas Internship Network. May, may keep that as a separate line item based on how those kinds of rules of the other internship.
Thank you. Yeah, I think we've got forward planning events that are getting pushed into this.
We were just trying to disrupt that for you. We didn't want you to get more. I know you're busy welding on the.
Yeah.
No, that, that is furthest from my intent is to disrupt something that you are. That's not what we're trying to do. We're just trying to streamline the administrative side. There's a motion to adjourn this work session.